All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Farmington Board of Education meeting, excuse me, for Monday, November 12th, 2018. If we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on our agenda, item three, A, it's a recognition tonight. This is a nice time for us and to recognize that sort of a great little project that sprung some little wings and took off and is now culminating in sort of the coming together of a lot of active people in the community, stakeholders that were interested in seeing this to fruition. And it's really going to be a great addition here in terms of the facilities here in our schools, not only for our schools but for the entire community. So this is one of the great moments of being part of the Board of Ed and recognizing, as I said, the individuals have put a lot of work and time and effort into this. So Kathy, if you want to introduce-
Sure. So the Westwoods Upper Elementary School recess space project was initiated by a group of parents led by Dave Table, who's here, and countless community members, Westwoods fundraisers, parent donations, and tonight two significant community donors have made an expanded recess space possibility here at Westwoods. So we're really excited. It will be an extended playground and we'll have a playscape here as a result of this project. So the first group is the Community Chest of Farmington, and the Community Chest is a nonprofit organization founded in 1931 for the benefit of our community, the Farmington community. All of their officers really volunteer their time and they focus on projects that are about health, educational opportunities, community life of all residents of the town of Farmington. The second donor is the Lions Club of Unionville. It's a very strong community partner and service organization. The organization helps others in our community in a variety of ways. They are best known for fighting blindness. Their outstanding volunteers engage in many different kinds of community projects, caring for the environment, feeding the hungry, supporting recreation, and aiding seniors, just to name a few. And tonight, the Lions Club will present a matching donation for the Westwoods Expanded Recess Space. So both of these community organizations are here to present large sums of money to support the Westwoods Playground Expansion, and we are so grateful for these community members and these community organizations to step forward and provide this additional and much-needed support so that we can get to the finish line when it comes to this project. So I think Dave's going to come up, maybe say a few words, and then we would ask the two organizations to come up and also say a few words, and then we'll do the presentation of the checks, uh, checks, plural, right there.
Right there.
Well, they're all over there, so I want to... But, no, I just, you know, I grew up in this town, and, you know, we are blessed to have such two wonderful organizations, the Unionville Lions Club and the Farmington Community Chest. Not only with this project, but so many other things in town, they've supported, like the Community Chest, as you mentioned, they, you know, support the food bank, food pantry, summer camp, college scholarships, and services for the elderly. And then the Lions Club, you know, they have, you know, they've supported the handicapped-accessible van, West District Boundless Playground, Dollar Ride Van, many scholarships in Farmington. And I personally have benefited as a child using their facilities for PTO events and for Boy Scouts events and things like that, and just a phenomenal organization. And I've learned more about the Community Chest and all that they've done to helping community members that are having a tough time and kind of like, you know, behind-the-scenes stuff that makes our community such a wonderful place. And what I'm especially amazed of, too, is the Unionville Lions Club, that, you know, they've raised most of the money through cans and bottles, and they, my understanding is that they collect them, they sort them, they wash them, and then they redeem them for like, you know, five, six, seven cents a piece. So you're looking at 700 or 800,000 cans that were used for this donation thanks to them. And, you know, we can't thank you enough in our community for all that you guys do. So, you know, just a huge thank you.
And David, I'd just like to especially thank you. I mean, your commitment and dedication to this project cannot go unrecognized, and it's greatly appreciated, you know, to the community and the time and effort you've put into this. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, but this is a community event, you know, between the Board of Ed, you guys, Town Council, UNC, the, obviously, all the organizations, and many, there are many supporters that are in the audience here that have helped, you know, Sean, you know, helped so much with the project, and the Rams, and the Boars, and Shoffleys, and all sorts of folks, and Olson, so, and just a handful of them. So there's been so, such outpouring support that we're so appreciative, so, so thank you. And I know I'm forgetting people, so please forgive me.
All right.
We could start with the Community Chest, and then we'll go to the Lions Club. And Alicia, if you're in the room, I know she's somewhere.
Kathy, you should have gone over here for her.
David, you want to come over here?
Just be careful.
Yeah, go that way, Amy, John, go that way.
Come on, Johnny, get up there. Even I know you guys have worked really hard. Let's go. Scooch in, we got all the friends.
I want a copy of dress.
Good work.
There's another one. There's another one. Don't leave. There's a whole nother check.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The Lions Club want to come up?
Oh, we did a big collection.
Grab a cookie on your way back, guys. Grab a cookie on your way back.
You're 15 and under, you have your cookies.
Good work, Mr. Good work. Johnny's so tall.
I know.
I mean, Matthew was, too, but dang.
I could steal his shoes now, we have the same foot size.
Matthew's a shoe-
Okay, at this point, we're just going to take a short recess right now, so five minutes, and we'll come right back to the meeting. Six B, College Board and CWRA Testing Report.
So the SAT, AP, and CWRA reports are presented to the Board each year. Brooke, Stansiel is here, our Head of Counseling, and Bill Silva, Principal of FHS, are going to provide an overview of the SAT and AP report. And then we'll switch to CWRA.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Careful. So we thought we would highlight a few things that were notable this year, and then give you an opportunity to ask questions, if you have any. So the, as you've seen, the report covers the AP, the SAT, the SAT subject, and the ACT. So the SAT and the SAT subject and the ACT are all used for college admissions purposes. So students, as part of their college application process, would submit these to colleges. The Advanced Placement, those exams are taken at the end of a course, that students have access to beginning sophomore year, and they can be used for college, not for the application process, but once they're there, for college credit or for advanced placement within a course. You can move to the next level of the course based on it. So a few highlights for this year. We were excited to see our number of AP course participants and AP exams taken rise. I think AP Psychology had a big part in that. We had 66 students taking the exam there, and it really provided an opportunity for some students to access AP courses that hadn't before. That speaks to our uptick in students who have taken over their four years at least one AP course, so we're happy about that. In the SAT, the SAT numbers went up a little bit, and we're happy to see that. So 593 in evidence-based reading and writing, and 585 in the math, so we're always proud of that work. And the subject test, the number of students who took subject tests went down, our scores are solid, and I would attribute that to just the requests for colleges. So colleges aren't asking for subject tests as they were before. The subject tests weren't rewritten when the SAT was rewritten, so they're not used as much as they had been in the past. And with the ACT, the scores are pretty consistent with the ACT. We had fewer numbers of students take them this year as compared to last year, and that aligns with two things. One, the focus that the state of Connecticut has on the SAT, so students are taking the SAT as their state test as juniors. In Farmington, students take the PSAT as sophomores and juniors, and they take the SAT as juniors. And so that encourages them to really put time into that test, and so it's not a surprise that they're not taking the ACT. What's also happening simultaneously is that schools are becoming test optional, so students aren't as often needing to supply test scores to schools, and so they're less likely to want to take another test just to have another opportunity at it and see if they perform better on that. Just in general, in Farmington High School, so the students take the exam three times in school. The one that they take in 11th grade is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, so for some students, that's fantastic opportunity. We have opportunities for students through continuing ed to take a practice ACT and SAT, so this year it's in January, so that's a nice opportunity for students if they just want to see if they prefer one test over the other. We have a college admissions testing night for parents to come in in January and hear from experts, including counselors, about the tests that we take in school and the tests that they can take outside of school, and just help them understand what that looks like, what the details of the tests are, and how they apply in terms of college admissions testing, so that this year is January 24th. The scores, once the students get their PSAT scores back, they can get it in their college portal, but they all have classroom lessons. So the 10th graders and 11th graders have classroom lessons with counselors to review them, and it gives them an opportunity to sign up for Khan Academy, which is the way that they can prep free for the SAT. And we have individual planning meetings each year for students with their counselors and their parents, so they come in as sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and that's an opportunity for them to talk individually about how they performed on tests, how they can prepare for the test, what might be the best approach to taking a test, or what test should they take for the, for the future. And that's in addition to classroom lessons, with just that one-on-one time. And the Junior College Planning Night this year, for the first time, we're opening up to all parents. So it seems that the community is very interested in college and college admissions, and we're happy to talk about it. Typically, we've had our Junior College Planning Night in January, we pushed it up to December because we have more people interested in this year. With Dr. Silva's permission, we're opening it up to other grades. So if parents are curious and they want to learn more, we really want the juniors and the junior parents to be there, but other parents are going to be invited this year. So we hope that that's received well. Does anyone have any questions about what we do in the counseling office or the tests themselves, or the results?
They speak for themselves.
Yeah, pretty good.
I remember when we had resist, well, I'll wait till my, wait till the next section, but yeah, this is great. This is great.
When you look at something like Calculus AB, I mean, that seems low, right? Or, I mean, what's, is there something?
As far as the scores, the number-
It was 43% is, I think, three or higher, right? Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah.
So there's a tension between opening access and putting the emphasis on, on the score, and, I mean, I can't speak to Calculus AB in particular, but my hope has always been that we would encourage as many students as possible to challenge themselves with the Advanced Placement Test. I mean, that gives us the extra responsibility to make sure that we're preparing them for the test and to do well on the test, and both, not only in that course, but also to make sure that the content and skills as students move up through the grades, you know, gets them ready. So we use these figures to kind of determine where the challenges are and to make sure that the curriculum is right and the instruction is right, and that we're, you know, doing the best that we can. But I wouldn't want to, you know, privilege the score to such an extent that we, you know, begin to either, you know, move some students out or to discourage some students. So I'm willing to take a little bit of a dip in terms of performance if, with the priority on, on access. But, I mean, I'd still want performance to be good, and, and where we use this data is in kind of going back with the department leaders, with the teacher teams, and saying, what, what do we need to do to make sure students are really ready and can be successful in the course and successful on the, on the exam?
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, I just-
Yeah, absolutely.
-I just wanted to add stuff a little bit. That is one of the reasons why you'll see the math pathway also changing. So you'll see, it's already started, the transition has started. We are going to expand the algebra to be longer because we found some weaknesses there that were shaky, so students were going into pre-calculus. Some students were going into pre-calculus with a little bit of a deficit. We're hoping to shore that up so that they're more ready for the calculus. So this actually is part of the data that was leading us to the conclusion that we needed to do something about the math.
Yeah, no, I'm not being critical, I'm just wondering what the takeaway is for the curriculum, yeah, I mean, that's all.
Did you notice something that we were trying to address through curriculum change?
Yeah, no, that's great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I was just at a college board meeting, and there was mention of kids just not taking that. Do you also count the ones who just didn't take the, the test in here, or do you just say, well, they didn't get a three because they didn't take the test, so we're, could that account?
It's of the test taken.
Oh, it is of the test. That's what this is. Okay. Thank you.
And Burke, I mean, I mean, one, my daughter's out of college now, and my son's in college, but they're going to, test optional? I mean, universities now, it's largely, is that largely?
Not largely, but more and more schools are. We get emails every day, so-and-so's test optional.
Really? And even some very competitive schools.
Yeah. So you can still submit your scores, and they'll take, they'll take them into account, but you don't have to. And then in some cases, you submit your scores because they consider them for merit scholarships, or you submit your scores because they consider them for placement, but not necessarily the initial acceptance. So there's different variations, but, yeah, it's a big shift. There's a good website, fairtest.org, that has all the information of the schools that have made a move in that direction.
Is that a reflection on lower, just overall declining enrollment and the competitiveness the schools have to try to attract students?
My understanding of the things that I've read, it's more about what they're seeing day-to-day, and students show success, as opposed to how they performed on one test in one day. So they like to use their overall GPA, and then they break it down to the core classes, and then the GPA that includes all their elective classes, and that's shown success in college in a better way than the SAT itself.
So basically, students that can demonstrate, you know, deep, deep understanding of core concepts do better than those that are essentially taught to the test.
Mm-hmm, and over time, because you have to keep consistent day, day in and day out, and you have to, you have to be able to sustain it, as opposed to one day you can work very hard, show everything, and then maybe you can't continue that over time.
Certainly sounds familiar to a certain school district that we're sitting in right now.
Ellen?
And we're, we're all inclusive of students that can take these exams, so that does not factor in at all, because I know a few years back, it was too bad, but we did lessen the fee that the Board was putting towards the exams. They're not cheap, and I know families are picking up a lot of the burden, so, but we're sure there's a window in so that if the student wants to take the exam, there's no problem.
Absolutely.
The state has already said, so I went to a college board workshop last week at University of Hartford, they've already committed for this year to cover, for free and reduce lunch, the state's going to cover the difference if the college board doesn't cover. So that's nice going into the, the season of registering to know.
Okay, all right, well, thank you on that, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know, I'm kind of sitting off to the side here. Examination, and we give that voluntarily. That's not one that's required, but several years ago, we studied what are some of the ways that we could show that we're making progress on the vision of the graduate, are there any external assessments that could help us with this? And this is the one that's sort of the industry standard in terms of these kinds of skills. So you can see there the scientific and quantitative reasoning, which aligns to our vision of the graduate, in terms of the reasoning piece of it, critical thinking and reading and evaluation you can see there, that's aligned to our vision of the graduate, and this idea of critiquing arguments also in terms of, you know, again, critical thinking and maybe even some problem solving. And so we're atypical in that, first of all, we give the test, there aren't a lot of districts that give it, but we're also atypical in the years that we give it. We give it to students that are sophomores, so any comparisons I can do are really with freshmen or the seniors. So I always compare our sophomores to nationwide seniors, and our students outperform seniors in that national cohort year after year, so the same results apply this year. But this class, this, they're now juniors, but were sophomores when they took this, we had partnered with the organization that provides this assessment, and they let us give a test to freshmen for free one year, and it's quite expensive test, it's like $28 a student or something like that. So they did it for free so that we could start assessing whether or not we're making an impact in, over from the beginning of freshman year to the end of sophomore year, and what's the growth. So I'll direct you to page four on that, because that's an interesting new part of the assessment. And it really is, consists of these two parts, a performance task, that is really kind of neat, they present a problem, and then there are, there's a document library of about eight different documents, seven, eight shorter kind of documents, that might be a chart, or it might be a short reading, and they have to construct an answer to some sort of question. And then there's also a selected response part of it, which is also interesting, too, where they give some sort of, maybe a letter from a parent, there's an example at the end of the, in the appendix, where they ask students to analyze the argument and whether the argument that this person is putting forth has any validity, and is it accurate, and sample size, and those kinds of things that we want students to be reading for. I mean, in this day and age of everybody, you know, talking about the news and what's true in the news and all those kinds of critical skills. And so there is some effect size, really a point for effect size is pretty significant in, in sort of research. So I think that, you know, on the performance task, we don't see, we see some growth, which could just be explained by being a year and a half older, but really in the selected response section, it seems that there's some things that we're doing instructionally that are really bumping that part of it up. And so while to most people, a report like this would look like all good news, all I can always see in all these reports is more work we have to do. I mean, to me, I always see these, and unless every student can meet these benchmarks and unless, you know, then I feel like our work isn't done, and we still have lots of places to grow. But this always gives us a little bit of leverage, too, because I think we do so well, as Brooke was just showing, we do so well on so many factors, that to have this to keep pushing us internally, and I think it's a great part of what we are around here, that we're never satisfied, and we hold ourselves accountable to standards that other people aren't even holding us accountable to. You know, the state never said, "Do this," but, you know, we feel very strongly that this is what we want our students to be really good at, and so we just keep holding ourselves accountable to higher, you know, higher standards and trying to get all students there. So, anyway, like I said, it's good news in terms that our sophomores do better than seniors on this assessment, but you could see in the data, and you had a chance probably to review, and I don't want to go over every piece of it, but you could see there's still a lot of places to grow, and a lot of students who still don't meet, you know, at the higher levels on these performance tasks. So it sort of adds a little bit of urgency to our work and some more, you know, places to go with pushing ourselves to get our students there. So it's, it's good that we give this and hold ourselves to these standards, and now we have to integrate it into our curriculum and all that. So I'll open up to questions, if there are any questions about this.
Questions, comments?
This is an outside assessment that we're using to assess our VOG skills, our, those transferable thinking and learning skills. That was really why we looked for an outside assessment that was more aligned to our vision of the graduate.
Right.
Veronica, I appreciate, just like I said with the other one, the, the results are great, I just, you know, you look at something, you're always trying to look to improve, so I appreciate you view the reports the same way. And this is the one that also we are testing against private school children.
Yeah, so you can see in the appendix there, all the schools that really give it, and there are a lot of independent and private schools that, pretty, you know, prestigious schools that give this assessment. And it's supposed to give a leg up at the, you know, for college admissions, but I'm not sure that many of the colleges really look at, look at it, although there is a push by the organization that gives it to, you know, start giving out, and we're going to probably see a lot more of this, but like credentialing, so giving out certificates that you've met it at a certain proficiency level so that students can add that potentially to a transcript or put it in their file when they're applying to schools. And so that's something that we're going to partner with them to start providing for our students, and potentially even putting it on our transcript for, not saying you didn't meet it, but for the students who really excel, having some sort of acknowledgement on their transcript that they, in addition to having these kinds of scores, they also have these other sort of designations or badges.
Is this a test that's recognized at the university level?
I think that they would know it. There are many colleges that give the college version of it, which is, I think, called the CAE or some other, there's some other acronym for it at the college level, but some colleges hold themselves accountable to growing students on these same kinds of skills at their level, but, and some schools would probably not know what this assessment is, but certainly, you know, if it was on there, it certainly would look like, you know, another sort of designation that our students have, that maybe they would have to look into and say, "Oh, what's that?" And might look into it and say, "Oh, that's, you know, you know, good set of skills for students to have."
Any questions, Liz?
This is more of a comment, I guess, but it's just that, as far as standardized testing goes, or assessments go, I really like this one more than any of the others, I would say.
We do, too.
Because it really is just, it's, it's really realistic, and it's more like something that I think the students will see in real life. It's something that I think really values the things that we're trying to teach them, and the things that are really what we're all about in this district. And I think it's, you can just see from the, the districts that, and the school systems that utilize it, it's not, it's not very widely used, but I think it probably should be, but, because it's, and so even though maybe it's not- I think it probably should be. But, because it's, and so even though maybe it's not going to be something that colleges or workplaces would look at, it's something that I think is valuable and that we can probably learn a lot from. So, and it's something that the students, you know, can also learn a lot from, and that we could get, we could learn something from, and that we could see what skills they're, they need.
Exactly.
What skills that they're learning and they're mastering, you know. So I, I think it is useful, and I like it for that reason. So I mean, how long have we been using, how long have we been using this?
I think this is, so I think it's the third time we administered it, but over four years.
Okay.
And that's not counting the one freshman. So, so three classes have gotten it, but we skipped one year of doing it. So we did it one year, just kind of see what it was. And then, then we gave, and then we gave it two years in a row. And one of the classes was a class that had it as freshmen and as sophomores.
So I guess like, is there some sort of data you could, you could start to assemble as far as like pulling out where we're going with this, and what kind of skill sets, like, you know, like that you can?
Yeah. So, so just recently, they put up on their website a nice listing of what are the skills really embedded in each one of those. So I, I just started talking to department leaders about, look, finally, they've provided this, and how can we find out where these are really taught and assessed in the curriculum? How does it align to our standards? And so there'll be a process of auditing, where are all those skills actually taught and assessed along the way. But it is a great, like you're saying, and the other thing I wanted to mention that I, I appreciate about that comment, too, is that our students, too, recognize that those are essential skills, because they do a survey at the end of this, and they ask students about their opinion about the test, and whether they took it seriously. And so, of course, some kids say, no. But a majority of our kids, a majority, say, yes, this was a, you know, this is, these are skills that I think are valuable to me. And I did take this seriously, and I put my best foot forward on this. So even kids are recognizing that these are the kinds of skills that they need to have.
I think you could see using this in everyday life. It's not like your typical test that you're like, well, when am I ever going to use that? Like, when am I going to, if that, then this? I mean, nobody ever, you know.
Right.
Kids don't think they're ever going to use that in life. But this is really something you can see sitting down in a job, and your boss might say, all right, well, this is a scenario, work this up, you know, this is something I might actually do.
And, and having it in our assessment plan forces us to really say, like, let's embed that into the curriculum. So where are the other opportunities that students have a chance to, you know, take a body of data like this? And an interesting thing about it, too, one of the things, one of our big takeaways when we started looking at it, was that, one of the things that we do in Farmington, like along the way, is when we do provide students with data sets to make sense of, they're usually very clean data. And so there's never like a distractor or anything. We try, you know, we give them the things that sort of, will make the argument all fit together very logically. So we've started, even in our math assessments and other places, putting in those kinds of things that are distractors, or things that are like messy, that don't make sense, so that they have to deal with a little bit of a messiness as they're going along. So that was another good outcome of having used this assessment and thinking about that.
Any questions, comments for Veronica? All right. Thank you, Veronica. Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay. Next item on the agenda, six C, the 2017-2018 goal results for town council strategic plan.
So this mirrors the results and outcomes booklet that you received tonight. We provide this to the town council for their strategic plan, and we always have the board review it prior to. So this is that real short version that you see, where it just gives the data. And then the town council integrates this into their booklet related to their strategic plan. So just-
This is the short version?
What's that? This one is.
The one that's in your, you have a re-adacted version in your packet.
This one is our version, which is much more detailed. This really, we just provide the actual data to the town council.
Kristin, you haven't memorized it yet?
That's why I was like, this is the short version?
This is just like that, the test Veronica talked about, there's going to be a question or test at the end of this.
I'm ready.
It's not open book. Any questions or comments for Ken?
It looks like you're meeting or working your way towards achieving all the goals you've set out in the five-year plan.
There you go.
I think it's a fair read of what you've submitted.
Yes, absolutely. It's our accountability system.
No red flags, consistent improvement over time. It's a good document for people in our community to read, though, especially people, I know people that want to move here, look for this kind of information. So it's excellent.
Next item, six D, results and outcomes report.
So this is the larger document. And the results and outcomes report is a document that provides the outcomes from the previous year, when it comes to the goals that we set, those priority goals at the district level and the school level that were, that were set, aligned to our vision of the graduate, our framework for teaching and learning, core beliefs, and theory of action. So we're assembling this year's priorities in a, in a booklet for you for next board meeting. But this takes a look back and reflects upon, you know, what did we achieve last year when it comes to our goals and priorities? So Kim, we'll provide just a quick summary, and then open it up to any questions.
So you're seeing the results and outcomes version of the newly redesigned school development plans and program development plans that we presented to you last fall. It's a more streamlined, more readable, more organized document, hopefully, even it's in its results and outcomes form, format. But I know there's still a lot in here. So I'm just going to mention a few highlights that I would consider to be thematic initiatives and efforts across all schools. And again, I'll speak in those same three buckets. Each of the school and program development plans are organized in those same three buckets: culture and climate, academic achievement, and teaching and learning. So if you were to look across all of these school-based and program-based reports, you would notice strong attention to developing an inclusive culture of learning in all of our schools. This idea that all students will feel a strong sense of belonging to the community. And that was accomplished last year through student surveys, and listening to students in focus groups, talking about their experiences, bringing in training, trainers from the Discovery Center, which is now called the RE Center, on equitable classrooms, and diversity and understanding amongst our, all of our stakeholders. You know, we have new clubs in our schools. At IAR, we have a diversity club. At the high school, we have a Black Student Union, and a whole week devoted to social justice. And so you see a lot of those efforts across all buildings. And at the DLC level, we spend a lot of time sharing those practices and talking about the progress that we're making, so that we really understand, you know, as leaders, what our moves are to bring, bring forward the initiatives in this area of culture and climate. In the area of academic achievement, I would say that you'll notice, of course, first and foremost, many efforts, strong efforts to continually expand and deepen opportunities for students to acquire the transferable thinking and learning skills of our vision of the graduate. It's always what we lead with, what, what is first and foremost when we think about academic achievement, because we're also talking about those core content standards, as well as the vision of the graduate skills. Last year, we had a strong emphasis in the elementary grades on literacy instruction and systematic phonics instruction. At the Westwoods level, I can't help but mention, since we're here, we had, you know, teachers really moving forward this idea of flexible learning time for students, as ways in which students can access challenge, both challenge and support, right in their own classrooms, where they're not leaving the classroom, moving down the hall. But the specialists come to them, and they can self-direct their own learning and, and set their own goals and monitor their own progress. So flexible learning time was really, you know, strongly initiated here at Westwoods last year, and you're going to see a lot of it now, and it spreads. So this year, more schools are doing that. And of course, we're always at the DLC level, very focused on reducing achievement gaps and looking below the surface, so that we know how our subgroup populations are doing. And so in teaching and learning, the third bucket, you heard tonight, a wonderful example of the many ways in which our students are celebrating their learning, both in terms of their outcomes, but also the processes they use to move their work and move their understanding forward in purposeful ways, with real audiences, engaging their local community, and sometimes at the high school level, their global community, bear aware fairs, writing buddies, co-created curriculum. You've seen these presentations throughout last year as examples of this work in all of our schools. And it's really exciting to listen to students talk about how engaged they are in the work they're doing, and how our teachers talk about how engaged they are in creating and, and acting as designers for learning. So those would be the highlights I would offer to you, as pretty common throughout all of the school and program development plans in this book. And we just build off those successes as we think about this year. And next time when we meet, I'll be talking to you about this year's goals.
Thank you, Kim. And I, I mean, one, the highlights for me, too, and you quickly, you know, when you're going through this, is the survey data, too, at the back.
Absolutely.
The family and student surveys is reaffirming in terms of high expectations, that, you know, it's a culture of inclusion, and, you know, the field, the children feel comfortable. So I think the survey information is also very supportive of the overall, you know, what we're trying to achieve.
And we really take that feedback very seriously from families and students.
So any questions?
Actually, I was going to maybe be a little bit contrarian there. I, you know, in reading this, I was really interested in the survey results. I think that's probably one of the most important aspects of this, because it gives us a sense of what our, our stakeholders feel about what it is they're experiencing. And what jumped out at me was some of the numbers of Irving Robbins.
I agree with you, Pat.
Which, which are, which I would be perfectly frank with you, I don't see as very rosy. When you have some student data that, on page 50, there is a question, "How strong is your school's culture in ensuring that all students feel valued and respected?" That number's a 78%. That's low, from, from my perspective. So as we, I mean, we could talk offline. I know this is more of a tops of the, you know, kind of get an overall sense of the, of the report. I don't want to get bogged down in individual survey results for an individual school. So we could maybe talk offline on that. But that troubles me, to be honest with you. And that is further backed up when you look at how much, you know, on page 59, "How much do you believe that the teachers in this school care about you?" And the number's 86%. And the only reason why I highlight that is that if you look at the data at the high school, the numbers are in the 90s. You know, and at Westwoods, the numbers were in the 90s. So, and I understand there's going to be this reality of the age, right? The 13 to 14-year-old age, and that's going to, it's, it's a tough age. And I, and I'm not trying to minimize that as being reflective in why some of these numbers may be what they are. But I think that would be the question I would have, is like, how much of that number is, I'm a 13-year-old who hates going to school, I hate everything about school, why do I even have to go to school, versus, you know, there's something more systemic in the culture that we need to kind of be mindful, be mindful of. I don't think this is a, a red flag that we have to triage the problem immediately. But it's something I think we need to be mindful of.
I couldn't agree more. Absolutely. And these results are, they come out at the end of June, but then we start this school year, looking closely at the results and celebrating the things we feel good about, and really trying to begin to consider what can we do about the areas in which we're not so happy. And, and we, we will dig deeper into those results through further exploration with, you know, small groups of students, and home room activities, and really listening to our students to get below the surface of, what does it mean when you say students don't treat each other respectfully? In what ways? Where? When? You know, how can we address those issues?
And I, I think that conversation would be hard, because you've, you've reached a group of kids now who have, since second, third, fourth grade, have been basically leaders of their own learning, right? And so they have been raised in an educational culture that emphasizes that they should have a voice, and they should see what's going on. And if there's an issue, or whatever it is, they should feel like that's okay.
Right.
So I think that's really important, that that's one of the ways you can kind of attack this challenge, is to get feedback from the students. I will say, you know, having a student there, that I think that our current principal, and this is not to say anything, think about, Scott's a really interesting, he's great, he's awesome. I'm really impressed by what I see. He's fantastic. And Nilda's also phenomenal. So I know they're working really hard. I know that, for sure. So this is not a criticism of them. Or anyway, I just think it's just something else going. I just want to be clear about that, too. I don't want to think that we're criticizing the staff, because they're, they're doing everything they can. I want to be clear about that.
Right. Yeah. I mean, just, also, just to add on to what Kim said, we take these results very seriously, not just in our improvement plans, will you see it, but in our teacher goals, our administrative goals reflect. There's a whole goal just on the survey results, so that we are focusing in on culture and climate, and ensuring that the feedback we get from our community is taken seriously. And we set goals around them. So, so that all of you know that even deeper level work, it would be individual teacher goals and our administrators' goals reflect areas of weakness-
Okay, cool.
-within the results.
Of course. Thanks. Thanks. And again, just, just something I want to be mindful of. Not trying-
Absolutely. No, we, I mean, that's why we're presenting it to the board. We also value your feedback and your insights as you look at this. And it's something that, really, this is a very important document for a Board of Education, because it basically is the accountability-
Right.
-for the whole district. This is how we measure success. And so that's why we're also very clear about areas that we need to work on, and we put that data out there. And, and we have systems to address it in the coming year.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Oh, yeah. Andrea?
I, I really like the flex time that has been added, you know, in fifth grade and sixth grade at Westwoods. And I have a fifth grader, so I hear her talking about, oh, what am I going to do in flex time today? And so, and so then I have a ninth grader, too, who has study hall. And when, when you get to freshman year, all of a sudden, you have this opportunity to access tutorials during your study hall. And I think introducing it earlier, it's, it's like that study hall period, the flex time. I, I like the idea of introducing it earlier, where kids, you know, they start to think about, oh, you know, where, where do I need extra help, you know, using their time meaningfully.
Right.
So going forward, you move on to IAR, where they have a study hall, but they don't have it as a flex time. And I would love to see something like that incorporated, so that it's just natural that once they get to the high school, you know, they're using their study hall, maybe to do homework, but also to seek out extra supports.
I totally agree with that. And we did make some slight scheduling changes at the middle school for this year, and are still looking forward to making more in the future, to carve out that time more explicitly. But we have, I believe, two teams at the middle school who are going to start piloting some flex time in January. And they, the scheduling committee at IAR came to visit Westwoods, and we've looked at other models, because absolutely, just providing quiet space where students can sit and read a book or do homework, isn't the spirit of what flex time is all about. And the more students are really prepared to be self-directed when they get to the high school, and they, someone isn't going to tell them, you should be doing this now, or that now, the better they'll be at, you know, managing their time and advocating for their own needs and goals. So we see that gap now, very clearly. When you see what Westwood students can do-
Right.
-you know that middle school students can pick up and go with that. So-
And then they'll be just so much better prepared when they hit the high school in ninth grade.
Kathy and I had the pleasure of doing a focus group, two focus groups at the high school last week, one with freshmen, one with juniors. school last week, one with freshmen, one with juniors. We both left like so gratified that our juniors were just so articulate about these very kinds of things, about how to get more support, how to access it, how to get to your teacher, how to use the interactive syllabus, all the various resources they have available to them. And the freshmen were like getting the hang of it slowly. But, you know, we almost thought we should bring both groups back together and have the juniors kind of give coaching lessons to the freshmen.
Right. And the juniors had really good suggestions because I think they probably experienced that same thing as freshmen. And they said, you know, you really should have a whole document that lists out all the clubs in one place because I didn't even know we had some of the clubs that we have at the high school. And I would have been interested in this or this or this, and I wish I knew about it. So they gave us really good suggestions that we can act upon pretty quickly. And that is the power of student voice. And when you look at research, it is absolutely what we should be looking at. Student feedback is one of those areas where you really can pinpoint areas of improvement pretty specifically and then work on it and actually make some significant changes that impact what students experience every day. And satisfaction goes up. And learning improves. So, you know, I loved that focus group, those focus scripts, they were really insightful. And I think that the more, you know, that we do this at the school level, the more insights we get along the way and not just in an end of year survey, but we can make adjustments along the way. And all the elementary schools now are implementing some form of a flex block because of Westwoods and coming to see it last year. It also was a DM group recommendation that there should be, so that we're not pulling students out of the core, that we're integrating a flex block during the day. So students are staying in class for core instruction and not being pulled out.
Mm-hmm.
And if they did get pulled out, it's during flex blocks. So they're not missing, you know, core instruction, which is really important.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Kim. Next item on the agenda, six E, Engaged Learning Update.
I'll just go through a couple of, or a few items. One of the items is East Farm Steam Night. This was sponsored by the Farmington Public School Foundation. Really exciting night for the entire community, well attended. And then I'll also highlight IAR. They have a science phenomenon item that kind of mirrors what we heard tonight for Westwoods. National Merit Scholarship semifinalist was named, as well as the commended students. West District had a PTO family fun night. And Union highlighted some self-portraits in art, as well as the Conflict Resolution Unit. So those are just some highlights from our schools.
Thank you. Next item, six F, Professional Appointments, Retirements, Resignations. There are none?
There are none.
Okay. Next item, seven, Unfinished Business Budget Impact Budget Update. Vince?
A couple of updates for the board. First, I'm going to start with, this is the season where we start getting the actual award letters for our grants. And not on this financial that the board's going to, the September financial, which we're going to look at in a little while on the agenda, but in the next financial, you'll start seeing some of the asterisks drop off because when we have the award letters, I'll have the official amount in there. But recently, the Choice Academic Support Award has been stated, $137,850. It's almost exactly what it was last year. The IDEA award letter came in, which is a slight increase over last year at $747,268, or a little over $12,000 more in IDEA funding coming into the district. I'm spending a lot of time reflecting on the IDEA grants and some of these other federal grants that we're looking at because our, as the board's aware, our ratio of free and reduced lunch is, has increased in the district. That's one of the things that's used in the calculation. And so I'm trying to spend some time looking at those. So, next update, I had sent out to the board that we did renew our electricity contract with NG, which begins in December. The contract was renewed at a higher rate over the last contract that we had with Direct, I'm sorry, with Blue Rock Energy. But it was, I think, locked in at a favorable rate. We, what was budgeted, what the board budgeted, did cover it. There's a small budget efficiency that's found, around $4,000. So there was plenty of funds budgeted for this increase. And the, I think it was a good timing on locking in on the contract because it seems like electricity rates are continuing to increase right now. So the advice that we got from our new energy consultants, CES, I think they really paid off in the timing of this contract lock, being locked in. Next thing, RFQ number one and RFQ number two have gone out. They're in the current, we had selected Jakunski-Humes Associates for doing the design of the roof projects at Union School and over at IAR School in the summer. Right now, they're in the testing and about to tighten up and give estimates on these two projects. So any day, Tim Harris and myself are going to get that information. It's very timely because as we start to think about the new budgets and seasons too. So that's underway. The second RFQ, Quisenberry, Larkary Associates was Malk, I think, I think I just said the three names correctly, were here in Farmington. Were selected for the infrastructure and security upgrades and the design work in the district. They have begun their work. And they are in the planning and estimating. And then we'll go towards some design work that will, for a number of different projects. And I think we're on track for looking at going out to bid on those projects in the early winter. So that's all underway. Just two things to mention about pressure on the budget or for budget impact, if you will. There continues to be work done at Farmington High School for those board members who were up there when we did the facility tours last week. They, board members already know this, but for all of the board members, you know, we continue to try to be proactive at the high school to put in more roof drains and to address other areas of potentially that we're concerned about and stay ahead of that issue. So I really have to compliment Vic Mashad and Tim Harris and the contractors that we have up there to try to keep that, ahead of that issue at the high school roof. And the last thing, and I'll talk more about it when we get to the financials, but I think we're, it's almost like Groundhog Day where I'm going to be saying to the board again, the same pressure in the same couple of areas in special education, I'm seeing as a trend with special education nursing evaluations and consultations. But Superintendent Greeter and myself are spending a lot of time talking with Dr. Singer about this topic, and we're carefully monitoring it.
Thank you, Vince. Any questions for Vince?
Right. As in, you mean there's more testing than anticipated?
Well, more than what we had budgeted for. I would just say that. The trend seems to be higher than what I was expecting budgeted.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Vince. Next item on the agenda, eight, New Business, eight A, Review of the 2019-2020 School Year Calendar, First Reading.
It's hard to believe we're talking about 2019-2020. So by December, we do publish the next year's calendar. So just keeping on schedule, we bring it to you as a first reading. There are some changes that I just want to highlight. And I know it was talked about at the curriculum committee meeting. One is that we're not calling them half-days. They're early closings because they're two-hour early closings. Sometimes we call them half-days.
I wonder why they're not getting out at like 11:30.
Because some districts actually do real half-days, and we do early closings. And we've added two. And we took away, well, we moved the February because we have consistently not been able to achieve the February due to weather. So we've moved the February. And it also is a challenging time because if we're faced with a late arrival and then we have an early closing on the same day, it's just challenging for everyone. So we've moved away from January and February. But you'll see that we did add two more. And I think this has just been an overall need in the district when it comes to professional learning. And, you know, Kim, I know, can talk a little more about that. But those are basically the changes that have been made. And maybe Kim has others that I might not have covered, but...
The last day of school for teachers is a half-day now.
It's always...
Has always been a half-day?
For the very last.
I'm looking on June 8th.
Very last day.
End of last half-day for teachers. Okay.
Because it's 185.5.
Okay. Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
So there are just a number of ways that I think we could effectively use the June days. I know it might seem odd to think, why would you have a professional development day right before school's getting out? But, you know, for one, it is the time of year when it's very appropriate to kind of consolidate what did we learn this year from our work together? And how will that inform where we think we're headed next year? Because over the summer, principals and some teacher leaders are occasionally talking and principals are meeting together, thinking about where they want to go. And to inform that thinking with some really good faculty conversation around consolidating our learning for this year to begin to prepare for next year. And as well, we've long thought about trying to capitalize on the work that teachers do with their own goals. They set academic achievement goals for students, and then they work on a target goal, which is kind of action research related to the vision of the graduate. We've thought about how could we sort of conduct it like a symposium, you know, or some kind of celebration of what the teacher teams learned this year in their innovative practice and sharing that across the school. And this would be the perfect time to have people get together to do that. So, and I would imagine that Veronica would tell you that teachers come to the summer curricul, oh, she's not here. They come to the Summer Curriculum Academy and, you know, it would be great if just prior to coming, they would have had a chance to maybe meet with their team and say, what are the things we want to improve on for next year? And do we want to shift some units around? Or getting that feedback in June, right before the academy days, is also very timely. So I know on face, it might seem like an odd time to, you know, put in some additional time for teachers to work together, but I think it could be very useful and productive.
Kim, what's the increase in PD days from last calendar year to this calendar year? Did you increase the PD days?
Two additional early closing days.
So, just, I mean, I'm very supportive of the PD. I think that it's great. I think that we need to support the teachers to have as much PD as they need. I just think a lot of things I hear from community members and parents is that they want feedback as to what's going on in the PD days. And that they also want to, it feels like we're being reactive instead of proactive in our, the way that we're adding the PD days in. Like last time, when we added them in the first time and added the six.
Yeah.
It was because like we needed to add PD days because we didn't have, we didn't have any really. We had a few. So, and then at that time, we were going to have reports back as to what was going on. I think we had one report back as to what was going on in a formal way. And I think that the community really wants to know, like, more consistently about what's going on. And then also have consistency in the PD days instead of just having like two here, two there, two here, two there. So, I mean, it's not about having the PD days. That's, I think everybody's fine with that. Everybody wants that. Everybody, you know.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, I think it's more about like how they're organized and having kind of more of a consistency plan, or I don't know.
I mean, at first, when we had two in February and two in January and none in June, it almost, I looked at the calendar and thought, oh, you could almost predict that, you know, for December, January, February, March, and May, you'd have the first Wednesday and Thursday of the month be the early release days. But then we had feedback from curriculum committee about, concerns about, you know, the winter.
No, I mean, that's a valid concern.
Right. Difficult.
Because you have the PD days scheduled, and then you can't have that.
Right.
Because there's no school at all.
Right. And all that planning is, you know, a waste. So we can certainly communicate what kinds of things are going on with parents through Friday folders and newsletters. I mean, we send updates to all of you and the weekend update as to how the PD days are being used. But parents don't see that.
Parents don't see that. Right.
So we can certainly do that so they know what kinds of, you know, activities teachers are engaged in.
Is there a benefit to having it the two days combined? Like the two early dismissal days combined? I don't want to call it a half-day.
Yeah. Right. Thanks.
Is that a benefit?
The high school and middle school like that because of the, rather than running students through 20-minute classes, they do half the day, half the schedule in one day and half on the very next day so that nobody is losing all that much time. And Christine gave us good feedback about trying to think about doing that even in the elementary school so that kids don't come home feeling like they had a rushed day and really thinking differently about how the day is scheduled on those early release days. We can do that too.
Do you know what other districts do? I mean, I know that a lot of districts have it more consistent.
They do. They do.
Like every first Wednesday, every first Tuesday, whatever, you know. Like, do you know?
They do. Some do. But, you know, there are some months where we already have a full day and other interruptions. So we try to avoid, when I looked at the calendar, we try to avoid those months to not overload. You know, like October, if you said it'll always be, you know, the first Monday, we'd have a Monday off and then a Wednesday off, and then the next Monday. And so it's a little challenging month by month. But I hear what you're saying for X, you know, just sort of a mental note to say, I know it's always the first Monday or...
I mean, again, it's not a matter of not supporting the idea of the PD. It's just that there's a variety of different things with, you know, and it's, obviously, it's different for elementary school parents than it is for high school parents. It's different for high school teachers than it is for elementary school teachers. It's a very difficult subject. So, you know, I, so your answers are, you know, obviously going to be different for a whole school system.
Right. And just before, just so, I'll add on to this. I think the idea came from this table to do them together. I don't think we were at that point proposing, but I, it came from the board that maybe doing the two days would, together, would alleviate a bit of this, you know, high school trying to get through nine periods. But the second part of it is, it's been really beneficial. I think Alicia gave a great example today. So when she talked about Ron Berger, that was one day, we had a half-day with Ron Berger. Then the next half-day, they worked on what Ron Berger went through, and they reimagined some units of study. So having them right next to each other, you actually continue the learning instead of these one-shot, we're going to get some PD in about, in four weeks from now, we're going to have another PD session. And I don't think, I don't think any other district, at least that I know, does it this way. But the benefits of doing the two days has, for us, has been significant. So I just want to say, I don't... So I just want to say, I don't think I even imagined the power of having the two days, not only for our students at the secondary level to not speed through nine periods a day, but then for teachers, too.
Well, that's a good point. I remember it came from this table. I was asking if there were any benefits that now we've seen.
Ongoing.
So that's, yeah, if there were any, so that's a good example.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark?
I think, yeah, the two days came from also with the idea of parents taking time, trying to schedule, because we were offering so many days to try to make it easier on them, because they have to ultimately get their kids early, or take time off of work, and things of that nature to make accommodations for this. The end of the June period, the June 3rd and 4th dates, I mean, isn't that like around the time where kids are finishing up exams, end-of-the-year projects, kind of wrapping things up? And it seems to be kind of like a hectic time for seniors, juniors, high schoolers to be getting a half-day right at the very end.
Yeah, so they're only doing exams the last week of school, so they only come in for exam time.
That is...
Seniors are done.
Right, 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 right.
That is the last week of school.
Now, if...
They're coming in for tests.
Right.
Their schedule's not the same.
Yeah, and if we extend the year, you know, then there is, you know, so if we had snow days, it goes a little later, but if that was the actual week, our students are doing exams, and they're just coming in, maybe for an exam in the morning...
If we had, like, six or seven snow days...
Yeah, yes, so then that's...
If you push off a week, then how does that impact how that, those two extra days are going to be right there in the middle of, you know, a lot of end-of-the-year activity?
Yeah, for, I think for, you're right, our seniors, it's less of an issue, but yes, for students who haven't taken APs, because those are done in May. All those assessments are done in May.
There's multiple other schools, too. I mean, only the high school has those exams. All the other schools have a regular day.
Right.
So there's no, there's no work that's being done that's being evaluated.
Right.
Right, your point about getting projects, those projects would have had to have been done a week or two in advance of that, because the grade's going to be made, or be recorded, you know, what, right, right before Memorial Day, right? That's usually when they do the, they...
No, no. They do them right up until the night before they're due.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my understanding from my son.
We're looking at data in the memorial timeframe, so, yeah, teachers are trying to summarize who met standard and that kind of thing. And trying to intervene. Right.
Okay, so, so triaging any emergencies before the final day they're due. Most data's in by then.
I guess, just my own comment, because this is a first read, so, you know?
Yeah.
It's about holiday break.
Absolutely.
Is, I'm not really crazy about the end-of-the-year half-days. I'm also not really crazy about adding two additional half-days without seeing kind of like, you know, something a little bit more substantive as far as, I mean, we already kind of put our necks out there with six for the community, and now we're suddenly adding two, and it seems to be just a lot of recap, and, you know, the teachers, what they want to do to kind of go back and reflect and all that, which I appreciate, but, you know, it's, I think we need more than that if we're going to put two more days on, especially at that time of year, which, in my opinion, just seems like a pretty crazy time of year to be doing that, so...
I would have to agree. I even pushing it, I mean, there is already two half-days in March, or, sorry, in May, but I would have to agree that that's, that's a lot for the last week of school. Because I, I mean, I know that at the high school for my son, they were putting in the grades, the grades close on Friday, and, you know, some of them were staying after school Thursday to fix a grade. You know what I mean? So like, they're going right up until the end, you know, especially the procrastinators, but, you know, like, it's reality. It's reality, you know? Sometimes there, it's, and that's...
So is it the timing of it, or...
Especially if we don't, if we don't have a full five school days. I mean, that's, that's a lot in one week.
I will say in curriculum, there were 10 proposed. So we dialed it back. So just so you know.
For me, it's adding two days.
Can you give me a sense of, do you have like a specific desired number of hours for this? So going back to Liz's point, like, we're looking to kind of help this process, like, how do we help you help the teachers with their PD? Because, like, for every school, for every parent, for every age group, we're going to have an issue for somebody.
Right.
And so how do we get to that place where we say, you know, the desired number of hours for our teachers would be nine, or whatever? So we can look and see, how do we make this, I don't want to say tolerable, because that sounds like a negative, but how do we make this good for everyone? And so it's not, not harming anybody. We're getting them what they need, but we're, you know, realizing what the constraints are of our parents and the community and that type of thing. Do you have any sense of what that number might be?
I did not quantify it in terms of numbers, but we did look at the calendar and, and just being able to anticipate that, you know, regularly, there's, there's some time coming up soon where we'll be able to come together and, and focus on whatever the issue is that the school's working on. So ideally, if we lived in San Diego, we would have time every, once a month, you know, and we wouldn't have to worry about weather. So it's hard to go from December all the way to March, but I understand, you know...
Oh, I see, that's, so that's what you were saying while you were, okay, so...
Yeah.
I understand why you're doing it, but I would have to say, I would, I would disagree with the last two days of school. It's just a lot.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could shift them to April, but then you look at April, and you think April's already...
You know, there's already vacation and Good Friday. That's hard.
It is hard.
You might have to use February.
I'm adding two more days, because I don't really know what we're getting on the two days that we can't do in the six at this point, without seeing like, kind of a roadmap for what, what are we, what is the pre-planned outline?
Was this, can I just ask, was this in committee? Does, what committee is, I can't believe I don't know.
It was in curriculum. Although I have to say, unfortunately, I missed it because I was at work at an ungodly hour. But, but I was told that, what happened, but, can I, I, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I, so, what I, what I, I also, I think Christine brings up a good point. I guess what I'd like to know is, you know, what is it that we're trying to achieve? Because, again, I, I do support the need for the PD, I think, and also, I think a point that needs to be said here is that I fully support the PD on times when the kids aren't in the classroom, because then that eliminates a need for a sub, so that we don't need to pull the teacher out of the classroom. And I think that most parents that I talk to also support that need. They don't like it when their student comes home, their kid comes home and says, my teacher wasn't in the classroom today, and then, you know, you know, parents don't like that. So I would like to eliminate that as much as possible. So I fully support the PD and the PD when students aren't in school. So I think that this, if that can be done, that's great, but maybe we could have a hybrid situation where we have sometimes when it's two days in a row, and then sometimes when there's one day just standalone, you know, maybe we could do that. But I think that this is a lot of two days in a row, and if you look at our calendar as a whole, I mean, the kid, it looks like there's just no months where the kids are ever in school for a full week. I mean, and I think parents and...
Take two of them, and give them the day after Halloween off next year, right?
I think parents, you know, get a little tired of, you know, it being like that. So a lot of times I get parents that tell me, like, you know, why are they, they're never in school, they're never in school a full week, and I think that if you keep adding that, it gets a little tiring. Not for all parents, some parents like that, but I think that we need to have, we need to minimize that disruption, but we also need to minimize the sub-disruption. So, I mean, it's, you know, a little...
That's what we were struggling with at the beginning of this year, is...
Well, right, September is hard. It's a hard month.
I think you have a good point. Is it possible to take those two and do like a one and a one? All the other ones could be together for your planning purposes, but maybe like...
Sure, possible, absolutely.
For the last week of school, not to have two?
Then we're still dealing with eight.
You know, you know what I worry about, because we, I think we had talked about this, we had asked the last time the calendar came up, or the PD days, do we have, I would be concerned, because, I should start by saying, I actually trust the, you know, Kathy and her office for figuring out when these would be feasible. I don't have a problem with that, when, when they come. But what I'd be concerned about are the parents, as Mark said, the disrupt, the, the working parents, or parents that had to make accommodations, because it is two days, and I'm, I'm sure that's, that's really the group that, that I'm thinking of. I'm not even quite sure what 10 would look, would look like. But so with the six, have we had any feedback? I think I've asked this before. Has there been any pushback by parents across the district, or no one?
No, we haven't. Not that I'm aware of, and, you know, we meet regularly with principals, and they have not gotten any calls.
And for, for those, what are we calling them? Early closing days? Are there, would there be across the district options on those days? Or, I know at the high school, it probably doesn't come into play, but are there options for students, or does everyone goes home?
Oh, well, there, sometimes Excel has programs at the schools. Sometimes they'll have an extra program. I mean, if you go to Excel, you can always go to Excel. But sometimes they have programs that you can, they have like an extra program that they'll run on those days.
Okay.
Sometimes, I mean, not always. Sometimes.
But if it's a teacher who would typically run things, then no, because they're in PD. Right, right.
Let's see, I guess my, what would, what would be the difference between what we're accomplishing with six days versus the eight days, other than the end-of-the-year review, which I, I always assume that when classes end, the teachers were there for a couple extra days anyways, to clean up their classrooms, as I know my wife does, so I don't know what the...
It's all about the specific district's contract. So we don't have that. We don't have that.
And those days, I think I had suggested those at the beginning.
I mean, at the end, and that's for cleanup.
From our elementary school parents' perspective, those days are a complete waste of time. The kids are not learning new concepts, they're not learning new things. Those days would be least disruptive to your elementary parents.
But maybe we take away the PD days.
But not so much to your high school parents, which I wasn't considering at that time, so...
Complicated.
It is kind. Like I said, every perspective, yeah.
Needs about which days to take off, or on...
Well, I mean, we, we, Trish and I had six, so, I mean, I don't really know, I don't feel like I fully comprehend what the addition of two extra days is over what we've accomplished the last couple of years doing six days, which was added to broaden the professional development program and how we're being asked to broaden it again, but I don't feel like I have a firm understanding of what exactly is being achieved during that time period, and maybe there's not enough time to go over it in a first read, but, you know, it would be nice to have a few more questions.
So, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Kim, but when you had brought this to us at curriculum, you had said specifically this year that you were struggling with substitutes. So the, in, you know, during normal school days, when substitutes might be available for PD or group, you know, groups of teachers to get together, that you were struggling with that. So in this scenario, you would be gaining that extra time that those teachers aren't getting now. So would it be safe to say that you're substituting out some of that in-class time for this? And would that continue to stand going forward? So like, to Liz's point, we would be replacing one with the other?
Right. Not all, but some, certainly.
But some, okay.
And I just think, to Mark's question, the demands on teachers continue to grow. Every year, there are more and more ways in which teachers are expected to address student learning needs, student social-emotional needs.
And I completely get that.
Yeah.
I'm just not seeing what that change is by just being asked to add two more days. Because, I mean, we have eight half-day professional development days, and then we have two full days at the beginning, so I understand, you know, every year, things change, but, I mean, if we're coming to be asked to add two days, I mean, there should be like, here's what's changed, here's what we would be doing during those two days, you know? It seems like, you know, I'm making a blind decision of, hey, I guess so, you know? I feel like I should have a more informed reason behind saying yes to this besides, you know, just being subjectively told.
I'm just saying that there are, I could list 30 topics of things that teachers are being asked to learn.
I understand, I understand. I'm not saying it to be, you know, facetious or anything, I'm just saying...
No, no.
You know, we have to make a decision about this.
Right, absolutely.
And answer to the community and parents about these things, and it would be nice to have that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thanks. So, I just want to be clear, you wouldn't have made this request in a frivolous way, right?
No.
Of course not. I mean, I mean, let's, I mean, we're having this debate about whether we're adding two extra days for a year, end-of-the-year wrap-up. That's not what I heard Ms. Wynn say, when she was thinking about why she wanted these two days at the end of the year. We know that your professional development demands have increased. We know that we have a very difficult time filling substitute positions, and that taking teachers out of classrooms is a very inefficient way to deliver special ed, I mean, professional development.
Right.
So in your judgment, you believe that these two extra days are appropriate to do what you need to do to finish, to accomplish the mission that you have at, at district level, to provide the requisite professional development. Am I clear on that?
I, I think when we first initiated the six days, it was a compromise.
It was a compromise.
We had said that we would be coming back in the future to the board to potentially add some days, because there are increased demands, more mandated training demands, and, you know, we're, we're trying to do it in a thoughtful way. There are some districts, and it's, works for them, that every Wednesday, or every other Wednesday, they do an early release, and we decided not to go in that direction, to do it in a different way, to make it more meaningful, to make it more predictable for parents, and to create, you know, two early release days to help at the secondary level with kind of, it's not meaningful learning when it's 20-minute classes, so we tried to fix that. So I think we've collectively done a really great job at trying to capture additional professional development time without adding a lot to a budget...
Right.
...or anything like that, and trying to minimize it. And I think if Kim, if I said, Kim, and, you know, what would you ultimately need? It would be more than this.
Right.
But I think she's, you know, she came to me and to the curriculum with a 10-day, and it was, you know, clear when, meeting with curriculum, like, mm, 10 days, that's a little too much, maybe eight, let's try that. So we're, we're coming, after a bit of discussion with one of our committees, and we're absolutely listening, you know, because we, we know this is hard on parents, and we, we accept that that can be really difficult for, for working parents, and, and all parents, so, and families, and Farmington. So we're trying to, you know, be careful about it and thoughtful about it.
So there's two questions. The first question is, do we believe eight professional development, you know, early release days are appropriate as opposed to six? That's question one. And it's, from what I'm hearing from you two, that it's absolutely necessary, right? So that's the first question. The next question is, when do those two new days fall?
Right.
Okay? And in a, in a calendar that's as difficult and as challenging as this, and we have snow day after snow day, and, you know, we've had, we've lost weeks of, you know, in the last, what, four or five years, we've set our last day of school and have gone over it by five days.
Always.
Almost, almost always. So it's ineffective, to say the least, to think that we're going to get professional development done in an effective and consistent way in January and February, when if it's not a, if it's not a full snow day, it could very well be, you know, a delay to get to school or early dismissal for weather. So, and then you got to deal with staff with bad weather conditions, right? So in your judgment, you feel that these two days are appropriate, given all the challenges you have, given, given the calendar that we're presented with, by the unified calendar, too. I mean, let's not also, let's not forget the side of that. This is not a calendar that we're drafting, right? We're trying to put square pegs in round holes.
We're trying to align to that uniform.
You better believe it. So let's be mindful of that as well. So with that being said, as a first read, I'd move that the calendar is, be approved as presented for a first reading.
Okay, do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any other further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, 8B, review of the 2019-2020 Board of Education Schedule First Reading.
So...
Clear the calendars, right?
Yeah, we, by statute, have to set these dates in January of the year before, so we're on schedule to do that. so we're on schedule to do that. I'll, I will just highlight the one, so we have only one meeting in November, similar to this, November, one, one in October, one in November, one in December. I just want to highlight that. We typically, and we could do two in November, but I'm always mindful of election season. That's always it, or, you know, it could, it could be local election, it could be state election, it could be national. So we're always trying to be mindful of that, that it's just difficult to me at that time.
You said two and everybody looked up at you like, no.
So, just so, we've made some adjustments, just knowing how challenging it can be for everyone in, in November, so.
I just have to say, I'm glad it's not on my birthday. Make it easier to...
I know, I should have checked.
I just think it's a little crazy that it says 2020 and I don't, I'm in total denial that we're like...
My daughter's graduation day has just been set.
Yeah.
That's my calendar, that's the calendar for 2020, is Grace's graduation.
Wow.
Oh, she's not.
Uh-oh, Bill.
Oh. How do you feel about that?
Good luck, buddy, good luck.
Next feelings.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the first reading of the 2019-2020 Board of Education meeting schedule as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions, additional questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next item, 8C, approval to authorize business administrator to sign the CSD Bureau of Health Nutrition Authorized Signatures Form.
This is something we, we have to do every year. We bring it to you.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Vince, any?
It's, as Kathy said, it's a mandate.
I know, I just didn't know if there was anything.
Someone has to sign it.
Yeah. I don't know if there's anything, anything you wanted to add, but, okay, the motion to approve the superintendent of Farmington Public Schools and the business administrator be authorized signer of the Agreement of Child Nutrition Programs and sign claims for reimbursement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, next item, 9, consideration of business superintendent, business administrator's report. Approval of the September 2018 financial report. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Vince?
So earlier, when I was talking under Budget Impact and Budget Update, I think the, the areas that I'm paying attention to again this year are the special education nurses' salaries. So in the nurses' salaries, I'm line that area, spending time looking at that. Consultation services, evaluations, that's another area. And the summer school program line that has a negative there, that actually, again, that is related to the topics I'm just talking about because there was, there were additional special education, summer school requirements beyond what we had planned for and budgeted for. And that's why that has a trend, has a negative. The outplacement tuition on page two, I have already applied expected revenues in that area. And I did it after looking at, I feel confident that our trend is pretty similar to what it was last year with the number of outplacements and costs. We spend time every week looking at that volatile area and discussing it. So, but that is an area that we do get excess cost reimbursement for. And, and then on the, again, on the grant pages, you're not going to see the numbers that I just brought up because we got that information just a little while ago, but in the, when, when the next financials come around, you'll start to see some of the asterisks leaving some of these federal, federal and state grants as we're getting our grant awards. But I really, I don't see any, I see expected results in those grant awards.
Thank you, Vince. Any questions for Vince? Okay, the motions to approve the September 2018 financial, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next item, 10, reported board chair, update of committee meeting dates. Curriculum?
We had a meeting on October 29th. We discussed the calendar as well, so...
Duly noted.
Yeah. We talked about, believe it or not, the graduation policy for 2023. And professional development, obviously, and then the five-year goal development timeline. And we have a second meeting scheduled for January 14th. It's at 5:30 and it will be at the high school library.
Okay, thank you. Communications, Ellen?
Well, we have a communication specialist with him, which is very exciting. So I think, Rich, you know, we interviewed, we had some outstanding interviews, but I think Rich is going to add sort of a great energy and a PR background and will umbrella the newsletter under there. And I think he'll be an asset as we go through the new high school project. I don't know if you want to add anything about his background.
He, you know, he has been a really involved parent, part of the Farmington Public School Foundation. Clear throughout the interview process that he was someone that would, knows us really well and also has a skill set that we need when it comes to communication. And so we will be setting up a communication committee meeting just so that the committee can meet Rich and give some insights into, you know, just from a board perspective, what are those areas we need to focus on in the coming months and then long-term when it comes to communication.
But right now, there isn't anything except for communications. You're going to...
No, we're going to set it up. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Policy, Christine?
So we met before this meeting. We also discussed the 2023 graduation requirements and some other legislative changes. We'll see those in the coming meetings.
Okay, thank you. Negotiations, Mark?
No report since last time, but we'll be meeting on the 29th, so hopefully make some more progress. And we have another meeting for the 20th, and hopefully we can get this wrapped up by the end of the year, but we shall see. More to come.
Hope springs eternal.
Hope it does, before the teacher's contract starts.
All right, thank you. All right, next item, item 11, executive session. Can I have a motion to go to executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, executive session. Policy, Christine?
So we met before this meeting. We also discussed the 2023 graduation requirements and some other legislative changes. We'll see those in the coming meetings.
Okay, thank you. Negotiations, Mark?
No report since last time, but we'll be meeting on the 29th, so hopefully make some more progress.